Action grants, uh, next round's expected in late winter, early spring, so around March-ish. So if we're thinking about applying for action grants now, or we should be thinking about applying for action grants now, what do we want to take out of this and put into action, actual items? Nice thing about action grants is at, they're on a three hundred sixty-five day, so one-year cycle. Typically, we're July one, it closes out June thirty.
June thirty, right.
Last day of June. That's, at first, sounds like a barrier, but when we step back and think about it, it's kind of beneficial, because it's making the, it's sort of forcing the town to point out as much as it can. Right? So maybe if we think first year is going to be a study, you know, if we're going to think the Miller's Beach project, right, how do we bring that back to life? That's not going to happen in here, right? A study will happen, then it'll be feasibility, can we actually do it? You know, what's it going to take? Where are all the pieces? We have to go in a different direction after we find out what we need. Then it'll be permitting, development, you know, it's another year of, of maybe phase one construction, then phase two, maybe it's three or four, five phases, maybe it's an eight-year project. Right? So each year, those, those grant cycles will build upon each other. Versus, let's just try to get a big grant, we get all this money, we have three years to do it, after three years, then it's extension, 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 extension. Now there's turnover here, turnover there, we don't even know who's in charge of the project. So that's kind of a nice thing, right? I, at least I think it is. Um, it is twenty-five percent matched cashier in kind, so that can be municipal hours work, that can be cashed off the books, that can also be, um, town equipment used. So if it's something that, say, the DPW can use, and they use their trucks and their van codes and their van hours in their label, that can be applied to the grant too, which is nice. Right? So you don't have to just pull up the checkbook and say, oh, that doesn't count. No offense. Um, Stain, do we have any other questions or comments?
Could that be private investment type one?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. We can use private money, you just can't use, uh, state money on state money.
What comprises the region that's capped at five million?
That is an awesome question. I've been asked this, the state does a lot too. They don't have an answer. There's not, it doesn't mean just because your borders touch, you're now regional. Because if we think about it, wherever it runs right through Barry, right? We have no control over what happens upstream. So maybe it's any town along the wherever, maybe it's another town that just wants to go in on some kind of alternate energy for their, uh, well points, right? So they, they don't have a clear, they don't have a definition that says a region is two towns or three towns that touch. So...
And they haven't districted the state to define regions yet either, it sounds like.
Right. So a region, so if we're going to apply for a regional grant, they just got to be certified. That's really, that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay.
Which I think is kind of in favor of, too, in some ways, right?
How many other communities have gone through this exercise?
Statewide?
Yeah.
Uh, the, this slide shows about seventy-two percent, like I was saying, it's a little bit dated, because that's from, uh, September two thousand nineteen, and then they opened the grant cycle in October. I don't have the updated one yet, but if I had to guess, I bet it's close to eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
Excuse me.
Or eligible.
Yeah, have, uh, they're either have gone through the process or in the planning process right now.
Are federally fund, are federal funds considered the same as state funds when it comes to your twenty-five percent in kind?
I have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
What federal funds would you use?
USDA.
Question? I don't know if I've read anywhere where it says you can't use firm funds, so I don't want to...
They'll arbitrarily say you can't, but I just figured we should ask.
Yeah, I don't want to be miswoken, but I don't do misking it. No.
Good for the zoo project.
Except Parrotwick's not a community. They got a long way to go to participate somewhere.
Something...
Yeah, but this is based to our portion and we have to pay.
Something that's kind of burning water to do, or...
So who's going to go and go?
The town.
Yeah, right.
I'm going to use it for our selectmen. So many board, Andrew's leaving, because I'd love to task Andrew with it.
Yeah, so I think that's sort of up in the air right now. Uh, but I would, I don't want to speak down to it.
I would say, um, for the town of Oxbridge, which we worked with recently, um, an environmental consultant, Foson O'Neil, I don't know if you guys have worked with them before, but they did the bulk of the work preparing the application with the assumption that they would be the ones doing the project. So they definitely took the burden off of the town staff, if that's a concern. Um, but there would still be somebody that would need to sort of corral or coordinate that effort.
I think the selectmen probably have to sign off on it.
Yeah.
But I, I would hope, I would hope that the core team that was put together originally will stick together, even though Andrew's leaving. I would hope that they would stick together and try to brainstorm these ideas, maybe invite some other people in. You know, there's just not like a high-spirited beyond the core team thing. It's kind of volunteer position, right? So if people are interested, obviously, reach out to Andrew if you're interested.
And since, um, she's not here, Alicia Musgraves was very active in the process too. She's on the Conservation Committee. Um, is she on any other committees, or it's just Conservation?
Conservation.
I would put it out there, especially during the transition, I would request any action, any committee or board in town is thinking they might want to do on this, work through the Board of Selectmen, so we all know who's on the same page, so we don't start different paths because we're not talking. And all of a sudden, we've got three concepts of applications, starting with everybody's limited budget, they're trying to get one consultant here or there. So I'm not saying we got to carry the torch, but I do believe it would just be in the town's best interest if you keep us in the loop of anything you're thinking, because it might actually be where we connect different boards with similar concepts and get them all together. So Conservation Commission might have something to do with the waterways, but something like the Planning Board or DPW, and they have their own reasons to justify it, and when you put it all together, it makes a better application. So with that, it is better to have at least your administrative office as a, a hub of the communication. It doesn't mean that an individual board or department wouldn't carry the torch after we say, that makes sense, nobody else is telling us not to. Kind of like, okay, let's move forward.
That's sort of, that's sort of, I don't want to overstep, that's why I kind of suggest getting all of that core team, right? Andrew's been no mention of that, hopefully in the year, it doesn't mean that everything falls apart. So get, if you, if you are someone who's interested, get involved in the core team, right? And then we can be pulling from different places, but it's that one central location that can communicate with the board back and forth. When, once you see the report, you will see that there's a lot of places that it's not just water, it's not just DPW, it's not just emergency services. It's so many different things that can be put into one thing. If you think about Miller's Beach, what would that take to get that brought back? Right? There's so many different pieces to that. It would be a huge project, right? Public, private, films, transfer stations, water bodies, there's so many different agencies involved. Very complicated, but there's working arounds and getting those people in the same room too. And if you have one group that's kind of leading the way, you can bring those organizations into that group, have those conversations, and, as Cher said, have a much more robust, you know, brand application. Excuse me.
He almost made it wrong.
I know. It's going to, it's going to be done tomorrow, probably, without other figures.
All right, one quick question.
Yeah.
Grafton and Millbury, what's it mean when you've got the stripes thrown?
Uh, so the, the stripes through Grafton, Millbury, and I keep telling the state and I keep leaving them out, I don't know why. I just go back one more slide. It's in the, in North Bridge here. They were, they were a regional planning grant. So those three communities got together and did a regional planning grant. They kind of did individual workshops, and then put them together, did one larger workshop. So it's sort of identifying everything that's connected, and they're kind of connected through the plaxis and can have, how sort of they're connected. I mean, they're connected in a lot of different ways.
Bumps them to the five million dollar availability, let's say, too.
Yes, and I will say that as a region, they have not applied for an action grant, but Millbury did apply for an action grant, kind of do a downtown development, I shouldn't say development, redevelopment. So they use, if anybody's familiar with downtown Millbury, uh, kind of right, right when you get into town, they, it's, uh, that intersection, I don't know what the names of roads, but it's kind of a weird intersection where they have this sidewalk that's like forty feet wide, just parking there. But they're trying to redevelop that into swales and water retentions, and an education piece, and shaded pieces, and benches, so there's all kinds of stuff going on. But they were awarded a million-dollar grant to put towards that. They also had, I think, three or four other different grants going on with that, whereas like complete streets and sidewalks and a bunch of other different things. And I want to say that all the grants and private monies that they compiled is like five and a half million dollars to put this project on. You know, so it's, when the state says we have, we have up to two million per town, they're not lying. They gave Millbury a million bucks. You know, so it's not just the coastal communities, it's not just downtown Boston, it is, it is other small communities like Millbury. I know Millbury's a little bit bigger than Barry, but, you know, still small communities here.
Is it possible to, when you put up the electronically, to have photos of the worksheets?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and on the core group, how is that established? You said there was by invite-only?
I think Andrew put...
Core group is just volunteers.
Yeah, it was volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah.
But the, the workshop was invitation only.
Yeah. And, and how, can you, can we get a list of those participants?
Oh, yeah.
That's available?
In the report, you'll have everyone who was attended, everyone who was invited. There'll be a, a photo of each, um, uh, each matrix from each table plus their maps. And then we have sign-in sheets who came outside of initial invitation. Sorry, that went a little longer than I thought we could talk to this.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Outside of Rutland, all our surrounding towns, have you received any, uh, have you heard anything from them, if this is something they're, want to work on, move forward with?
Yes. Um, Hardwick reached out to me, I want to say about two weeks ago. The, at, the application cycle was closing in a week, and I was like, we, I don't, I don't have the capacity to do it, and, and it's just too short of a time to put this together. So when I was speaking with them, I was thinking like, this is probably a great opportunity to do a regional plan. So hopefully this spring, Hardwick can bring three and oak hammer and apply it as, as a, as a region. That's, that's the hope, no promises made for that.
And again, because I can't see the key, the dark blue and the light blue?
Uh, the, the dark blue is in the planning process as we speak, and the lighter blue, they're, they're certified. They've done this in the last couple of years. This program's only been out since seven, two thousand seventeen. I don't think I mentioned that earlier, for this part of the year.
Thank you.
I should probably carry that key or just point that out.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments? Do you have anyone to pack? Yeah, that was there.
All right, should we clear this out?
Yeah, if anybody wants to look at this, I'm just going to kind of get it out the way, I'll put it out there in the foyer. I think we're going to be here. A few other things that I just, so, that, thank you, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Possible shortlist here of ideas?
Oh, we have a sign-in sheet, you might sign.
While that's happening, uh, we'll just go back to a couple of things I missed in the very beginning. Um, we have, uh, meeting minutes for December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and January sixth, twenty twenty. Uh, the other board members had a chance to review.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Ben, uh, because I only attended one, could I have a motion just for one of the two? And then, uh, we'll do the second one separately.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, December sixteenth.
Second motion?
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
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 And I would also make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, January sixth.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, I was not present.
These executive sessions are ready for release, are they not?
Um...
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
I'll make a motion to approve and release the executive session minutes from December sixteenth.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right, at this time, before we get into the next, did anybody come here with specific public comments you would like to bring to the board's attention? No? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Uh, next item is a transfer station committee recommendations from the transfer station review committee. This has been something they've been working on, on and off, over a year and a half, a couple of years? Is anybody from transfer station here? I don't see either. Okay, then we will hold off. We'll give that a, we'll hold that a little bit later. And you're saying dementia-friendly certification presentation is what you believe most of the people in the room might be here for. Well then, who is presenting?
I would like to bring up with my name.
Come on up, thank you very much. All are welcome to, come on up, um, introduce them. I truly appreciate the time and effort everybody on this committee has been putting in.
And your leadership, do you join us?
I could, but I'm not very valuable in this process other than I said, yes, they make great members. What about you guys?
I'm a member of a board.
Come on up, guys.
Come on, he doesn't want to be alone.
We're all a big fan.
Trying to take advantage, we go through more stuff.
We have to, we'll circle around here and have a photographer here, say, about Peter. Lighter angle if necessary.
So, my name is Patty Sullivan. I manage a program called Dementia Friendly Massachusetts. So I spend my time on the road, all over the place, talking about how to make communities dementia-friendly. And today, I was really lucky because I got to be in Boston. It's always nice to be only an hour commute from where you're going. And at the Tufts Health Plan Foundation. And Tufts is our funder, and they've given the Mass Councils of Beijing, my employer, the grant to do this work. And they were three-quarters of the way through the grant, and they said, we're kind of worried, because it only looks like, you know, you've got all these big communities doing this. And I said, no, wait, wait, wait. Now, lots of people in Western and Central Massachusetts who are engaged in this community. And so I said, guess where I'm going tonight? And so we talked about your action plan, and we talked about, you know, you have a very small senior center here who does, I mean, they do fabulous things, but it's tiny. And it's not like they have twenty-five staff people and seven hundred volunteers, like some people. So I said to them, here's a really good example of a community that really believes in this work. So I'm here tonight to recognize the fact that you have signed a pledge to become dementia-friendly. And people always wonder what that means, and it basically means that from now on, in this community, no matter what you do, you're going to think about people living with dementia and their care partners. And so you're going to think about the silliest things, my family laughs at me all the time, I take pictures of bathroom signs. Because how many of us have gone and looked and thought, is that a mermaid or a merman? And where am I? You can't have that in life. It has to be clear, so that all of us can access all the most basic services that we need. So congratulations. Here is your certificate. You joined only one of twenty-four communities across the state that have earned this certificate. So thank you very much for your work, and thank you. You should come stand and get in this picture. Come on, Eileen!
Honored to take the picture, he's right there. I mean, you deserve to be in the picture.
Yeah, Eileen, you got to be in the picture.
Taking that picture is just wasting time.
Yeah, it is. It won't count. Dave Stevens will say to me, where's Eileen? You hold this. This is not my work, this is yours.
You can stand, stand right up, I don't need to be, I can be between, you can't back up with a step, you're fine. You're not blocking anyone.
There you are.
There you go.
Great. All right, congratulations to the town. And you realize that this opens all sorts of other doors for you?
Yes.
In terms of partnerships and funding and all, we can talk about all those things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you taking the time. And to all the members that came and the members that did not show up tonight on our dementia-friendly committee, I really appreciate the time and effort you guys have been putting in to help us with this. It's, uh, to me, it's very important to the town, so thank you. Just, uh, point of that whole thing there is it does, kind of exemplifies the benefits our community has to the volunteers that go into these programs and take the time to really help build these plans, help us revise our policies. Um, this is the type of town contribution that I think the Board of Selectmen have been really trying to encourage ever since the three of us have been on. I, I don't want to speak for Greg and Dylan, but I've heard enough of what they've said in the past that I don't think I'm too far off course here. Um, so I can't say enough about the time and volunteered time that people put into this town to help us improve in different places.
And given especially that committee, that is an unusual committee. Twenty-four towns now, out of three hundred fifty-one in the state, uh, to get the response we did in that was, was, you know, commendable for the people in town that stepped up with that, and I'm very, very happy for that.
So, we will move on to the next item. Kathy?
Ready?
We are, if you are.
Awesome, awesome.
Come on in and bring all of your friends. There are two other members in this study committee.
Didn't know if there would be a whole group.
I don't know, actually, there might be, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, busy schedule, just take a few minutes. Um, just going to give you a little background information, little paperwork, some facts and figures, and we're out of here, hopefully ten minutes.
All right.
And you, they have copies of some sheets that Andrea gave you, right? And this is a...
Pretty good package.
Right, and this is just a little bit of factual information of what, kind of what we put together, and we'll take it from there. Um, we looked at what you were asking for us, and looking at the fact that the town didn't want to pay any of the costs for running the facility. Um, you have alternatives, the homeowner getting the hauler, town getting the hauler, the town running the transfer station, outside company running this transfer station, the outside company running the trash, and the town running recycling, or an original agreement. So those are possibilities of what you have here. Presently, Solid Waste Systems is operating it, paying the five million in insurance, paying the employees in benefits, taking the trash and recycling away. Presently, it's a zero cost. It does cost the homeowner a hundred dollars a year, and then it costs the bags. Um, background information, in two thousand and nine, the Board of Health implemented a solid waste recycling plan. Starting in two thousand and five, Barry was paying thirty dollars a ton for trash, expected for a hundred dollars in the future, which ironically happened, because that's what the cost right now is, is between eighty and a hundred dollars. Um, at that time, sixteen hundred and fifty households would purchase fifty-dollar tickets every two years, town bags would cost twenty-five cents. The revenue would help pay for the monitor at the station. Um, we checked into the operations in Hardwick, Royalston, Lester, Warren, Brookfield, Orange, Apple, Rodden, Gardner, and Barry. We're either calling them, going to see them, or such, we did end up physically seeing Barry, Royalston, Lester, Gardner, and Rodden, and observed that in person. Mark Popham, who was the Board of Health consultant, spoke to the committee, talked about the intermunicipal agreement. Um, and if it were to be that others came in with their trash to Barry, there would have to be a change in the site assignment from DEP and MIPA, the public process would be needed. Barry does under forty-nine tons per day, so it is self-certified, it does not require MIPA. He noted, though, that trash recycling is very hard to do as a standalone community, that success is in the volume. And also, we are very fortunate that we do have a transfer station in Barry. That's a very valuable asset to the town of Barry.
Can I ask a question in the middle right here? The, the, if we went, um, with regional, we'd have to get a certification from MIPA?
Correct.
And you said our forty-nine tons a day keeps us under that. Is certification because, strictly because you go regional, is because that will put us over the volume that it requires that?
He did not say that. I don't know that.
Just, just curiosity there.
Okay. Um, one, one of the things we have to do is the public process, because we're not allowed right now to take trash in under a town agreement from thirty years ago. So that's another process that needs to be done. I just remembered that from thirty years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Irene Condon, who's head of the state central mass recycling, talked about, you know, what we could do, the big companies that are coming in. Obviously, the problem started in January eighteen, when China initiated the national sword policy, because the recycling coming to China was too dirty. The contamination limit, they limited to a half a percent, which is totally impossible. The value of recyclables dropped, the prime glass bottle manufacturer in Milford also closed, which had consumed much of New England's recycled glass. The higher costs with, to these facilities, they have slow-lit processes to remove the contaminants, and higher shipping costs. Therefore, like, to give you an example, right now, at a December meeting that I was at, towns are getting four dollars for recycled paper, instead of a hundred that they used to be getting. That's just an example of one small aspect of what's going on. So the economics don't really work for a small town. She thought that other towns would come to Barry. This is what her thinking was over the years that she's been working with communities. The recycling is, needs, and also, the process right now, under the state requirement is, um, recycling goal is to have less than a thousand pounds per household, per year. And she suggested the town, she would really like to see the town with the Board of Health and all the other agencies in towns, such as Conservation, Water Sewer, independent vendors, come in and have a recycling forum of what could be done. The hauling costs, as she said, were eighty to a hundred dollars a ton. Rodden is a model recycler, it's very organized. The Baylor Building can store significant paper, they received a grant for a glass crusher, we did see it. Operating, if the operating costs are discounted, they break even. The operating cost is two hundred thousand dollars a year. On October thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, there was a meeting with DEP, and they're even having to, they want everything reduced to ninety percent by twenty fifty. So that's what they are working on, even though, right now, recycling is such a difficult thing. Fitchburg had to pay waste management in the last year, a hundred and seventy-five thousand for curbside recycling this year for the first time since nineteen ninety-two. Contamination is the problem. It's twenty to thirty percent. Post-it bags are the top contaminant, because they jam the sorting machines. So that's some of what we've got. We've got backup is in here, I'm going to leave the blue book for you, you know, to take a look at it. So any paperwork that received, any, any articles we read are in the back of that bottom of the book, so that you can look at that particular thing. I'll give you one example, today, we, we go to the dump all the time. And just one little example was a ketchup bottle that had half a bottle of ketchup still in it, thrown in. You cannot do that. You cannot do that. But that's not me, because I'm not recycling right now. But that's the kind of thing that needs to be noticed for the town. The town needs to understand that. And we need to educate people, and that's one thing. It would really be beneficial if, that just in the side. Second thing is, if you look at this sheet of paper that's right here, this is just what the operation, what the information is that we need right now. These are the towns that we went to. Towns with comparable population were Warren and Brookfield. Warren has a sticker price of $80 a year to residents. I'm sorry, here it is, right here. Okay, just to have you, if you see that one, that's the one that's right there. Okay, it just says Barry Transfer Station Operating Committee Summary with that. Warren, the sticker price of $80 a year to the residents. Warren is also run by SWS Sports Administration. Brookfield has a sticker price of 85 to the residents. Brookfield is administered by the town of Brookfield. Towns with twice the population like Lester, Athol, and Groton. Lester sticker price of 30, Athol $50 to residents, and Groton is a sticker price of 60 to the residents. The findings, the committee did not find a town, did not find a town that is making a profit at the transfer station operations. Most towns said the goal was to break even. With the volatility of the market prices, no one's making money and it's costing other towns to run their operations. The cost for disposal is going to continue to climb. The town of Barry is having a site, and accepting trash is very valuable today. If you look on the next sheet, what we looked at was the household trash, the plastic, cardboard, metals, bulky yards, trimmings, tires, food waste. They reviewed the 2017 calendar years for costs and fees associated with the Barry Waste Transfer Station. We do have some figures also that are, that are more relevant from some of the figures we were able to obtain, because it's a private company that's running it. And, but there's still information that needs to go into the state every single year. But that isn't due until February. So, so we're giving you, you know, the basic thing of what we have right now. Reported yearly revenues from the disposal is $81,000. This isn't underestimated, because you might receive some monies from bulk items, yard trimmings, appliances, you know, if, if you were to do that. And also, you know, some monies from the C and D, Christmas trees, you know, that kind of thing. You have to pay for getting rid of a lot of this stuff, too, so that you have to look at that. Total equipment cost to replicate what is at the Barry Transfer Station. If you look at all of that at a modest level, that cost of buying the trash compacters, the baler, the bobcat, the roll-off truck, the roll-off cans and such, because much of the equipment is quite old, could be about $409,000. We do have backup in the book that talks about that.
If I'm correct, we do have a loader, a roll-off truck. The roll-off can is down there, belonged to the town as is. I didn't know they had a baler or a glass crusher down there at this point.
No, we're just saying, if you said you wanted to run an operation, because you had talked about Groton and such, and that's, that's all we've...
Right, my speculation was, we didn't need to get...
These items are broken down on the spreadsheet, so you can pull out the parts and then you can...
Right, exactly.
Intention wouldn't be to get there all at once. Intention would be to be able to take it over and make it run. But, as you, as we've said and as we've seen, recycling has just gone through the roof.
That's the problem.
And trash itself, I've been talking to people in the trash, a lot of places are now hauling the trash and boating the trash, because there's no place to get rid of it. There's no incinerators that have capacity, there's no more landfills open, and even the trash hauling is, is gonna get more expensive.
That's right.
Remember the story about the big boat going from port to port up the east coast looking for a place to get rid of the trash?
That's no joke.
That's right. That's right. All right, and then the next page is what we were looking at. And we're underestimating this, because we honestly don't know what the cost, final cost would be, especially for insurances and such. Because I know what the sewer plant, it was, it's over $4,000 just to pay for flood insurance, you know? So they're all different costs, you know, for such when you're looking at, you know, what things cost. We were looking at the electrical, the full-time employee, truck driver, operator, two part-time, unbenefit employees, but the place is open 19 hours a week. It's open 19, and you're working there, you have the right two benefits. Insurance for the vehicles, insurance liability, capital expenses, the vehicle costs. And we saw that, when you're looking at both those costs of what you need to buy and what you need to run, that it could be, it could be, you know, a minus $44,000. You wanna look at the next sheets that are right there, and Mike, and John, I'll let you look at that. If you look at that sheet...
Can I ask briefly again before we move on, the negative $44,000 cost to run, that was based on?
The $409...
The $126,000 expense and the $88,000, $81,000 in revenues. But that doesn't seem to count the, the money for trash bag, for sticker sales.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, or it does. It does.
That's in the, this next sheet, the one with the blue highlights in front, is kind of just a brief overview. The blue highlights are kind of fluid revenues that we didn't account for, bulk items, your microwaves, your refrigerators, your things like that. People are getting charged when they bring yard trimmings, Christmas trees, tires, things like that. So there is some fluid revenue here that's not accounted. But basically, from the, the revenue, minus the cost to get rid of trash, the glass and cardboard and things, you're about $81,795. That includes, and we estimated, a rough cost of, a rough revenue for the stickers, 884 people buying stickers in the town of Barry. The number of bags, assuming one, on an average, one person who's buying a sticker is gonna dump one bag a week, you're getting, what is it, the 45,000 bags a year into the landfill, roughly at $1.50 a profit for the bag sales, not knowing exactly how much profit there is on the bag sales when a consumer buys, to how much goes back to, right now, SWS, or who would come back to the town of Barry. So basically, the revenues from the bag sales are $68,000, roughly $69,000. Revenue from the stickers is the other 88, minus the cost for the disposal of the trash, and that's where you're coming up with that $81,795.
Where is your disposal of the trash broken down? You're saying the math of this top set creates that difference. So if we just add up the total tipping costs, subtract the revenue from disposal, that gets that number that you're subtracting from the combined two revenue streams.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And then that rolls into, you know, obviously, there's the upfront cost if you took to replicate the facility outside of the yearly operating cost, which is the $126,000. Playing with the number of stickers, you know, it's all, it's a volume game, you know, at the end of the day, you know, and...
Those numbers were given to us a week ago by Patrick.
Yeah.
At SWS. The 884 is what they sold, what they sold last year. Remember, from 2009, that's down from 1695.
And we don't have an actual sale number on bags? There's no one tracing what sold the bags?
That's pretty to us, you know, that would be back to SWS. I'm sure they have the number of bags that are getting sold.
They've also limited access to the smaller bags. You can only buy it at the transfer station now. Every other site sells just the big bags, which means you're paying more for a bag.
And then you got the two sizes.
I don't know if that was strategic or just the way it worked. And I'm not gonna get into that, because I think there's more to do with the place selling it as well as solid waste, because they only get, I don't even know what they get for actually selling it for solid waste solutions other than a thank you. You know, I don't think they get to mark it up, is what I'm saying, so they're...
So this is just some of the information that we have. You can certainly look over the spreadsheets and look at anything else that you need that has to do with it. And then you decide what you want to do. I did read, again, the contract, and apparently, that contract allows you another year. For, it goes through '21, goes through July '21, the one that you just signed last year. We're doing that, and so...
Three-year extension is what we did?
Two-year extension.
It was three, it was, it was three years in the, because we did, we had discussed that you didn't want to do five, you wanted to do maximum of three, where you went back out. With the option to, at the end of any year, to decide to go in another direction.
But that notice had to be done by December, didn't it, I believe? So that ship has sailed anyways.
Right, so you have to give them at least the six months' notice if you thought that this was the most, if going in a different direction was a more beneficial route to take anywhere within that three-year contract. So you at least have one more year with them before it has to be reopened.
Me, Kathy, and John, we were looking at a lot of these numbers, and it's really a break-even proposal. And it seems like every other town we've talked to, and Kathy and John did extensive visits, hours, you know, visiting other people's facilities. At the end of the day, everybody's, they're striving to break even, you know? And I think the money, these companies, they're trucking companies. You know, they're making their money on the trucking, not running transfer stations, you know? It seems like that's the break-even proposal for them.
Right, they expected the best we'd hope to do in recycling would be break-even, which now I don't think is possible at this time.
Yeah, it's struggle to do it.
But the trash stream should be profitable. But once again, trash prices are getting, jumping through the roof, so the trash stream is not gonna be profitable without a significant increase. There's been a lot of changes this past year in both of these avenues for this. But the trash stream is what's the most amazing. That's something we ought to consider. We talk about new business in town.
That's a big picture thing that goes way beyond what a local community can do. Start regulating the manufacturing process versus how do you throw it away once it ends up at your front door, maybe you'll do something.
Should we...
But I don't need three boxes to pull out a little pack of batteries from Amazon, you know, and 10 rolls of bubble wrap to fill in that little...
Should we...
I'm sorry, I made my point.
Should we consider looking into this point, possibly looking for business proposals for people that might want to open an incinerator plant? We have a lot of land down there, and possibly could be done on the old landfill, the closed landfill from Waste Management. An incinerator facility, we've had the trucks come in here for decades without disrupting the town to Barry. If we had a similar thing with an incinerator plant, that would be a significant revenue for the town, a constant revenue stream like the landfill used to provide. And that, that might be both a good revenue for the town source and a more economical way for us to start getting rid of our trash.
I don't know if I want to approach DCR with the idea that we want to put an incinerator within 1,000 miles of Quabbin. I just don't see them smiling on that. I'm just saying, I think the DCR, and then you get into the actual DEP regulatory agency, I don't see the two of them smiling with the idea of putting an incinerator in the town of Barry with all the conservation land they're trying to continue to control.
Realistically, I'm sure there are, I don't know where the incinerators are nearby, but, I mean, I know there's one in Bradford up off of Havel. Fitchburg has one as well, so we're not that far from the Quabbin at that point. They're another 20 miles west of us, so it's 30 miles from the Quabbin. You know, the restrictions on the filtration and the air quality out of incinerators is pretty stiff. It's not like it's gonna make a mess of the environment, a mess of anything nowadays.
The town didn't want a cell tower to go up on a hill that they could see. I'm not thinking they want a huge stack for an incinerator. I'm just bringing up the challenges I see. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just looking at the challenges we'd have to get through if that's something you think is viable.
I'm wondering if that's an aspect that might be looked into, and maybe this committee would like to continue on and look at that at Possible Avenue. That's, we have people, they've done a great job with this, they've got a lot of data on this.
I'm open to it.
You know, to see what the feasibility of that is. We talk about business for the town, we talk what are the tax revenues for the town. And let's face it, when that, when the landfill was open with Waste Management, that was a significant revenue source for the town. And if you had a similar tonnage charge that went to an incinerator facility, that would bring a significant revenues into this town and would, you know, do a good job with our tax base and give the citizens some relief, as well as take care of our long-term trash issues. That's my thought.
Yeah, I think from a meeting that I went to in December, I think what they were talking, the ladies who were running it from the state, you know, were saying they're, they were trying to do away with the incinerators. But Real Aggrader was itself looking for one somewhere in the eastern part of the state, you know, with doing that.
What would they do with it if they got rid of incinerators? They're gonna keep burying it, and where? I mean, just, it doesn't make sense that incineration is...
Well, that's why the new DEP regulations that are coming out, and that's why they've been, they did a six-week program for open house for people to come in and make some comments on what was going on. That's what they're trying to do by 2050, is to reduce the recycling part, reduce all of this by a significant amount, the same way with food waste. More than a year ago, institutions, any institutions, you know, like schools, colleges, businesses, that produced more than a ton of, of waste a week, had to recycle it. They had to find a way to recycle it. And there are companies, there's a company in Gardner, that that's what they do. They come to Barry. And if you, if you take your rubbish, no, wrong, if you take your food waste, you can put it into a container, they take it, and then they work with all of that. And that was started in Beverly, Hampton and Beverly. And so, but now, the state is saying, if it's gonna be, it has to be a half a ton. So if you're a business now that's a smaller place, you produce a half a ton, then you're going to have to find a way to recycle it. It's not okay to throw it in the trash. So they're trying to reduce that trash and then reduce those concerns of dealing with incinerators.
So whether it becomes pig food, it becomes organic compost, or something, they've gotta do...
Find a way to give it to people who would use it, too.
And once again, all business opportunities for people to look into. People are gonna have to compost this stuff, people are gonna have to get rid of this stuff, and it's, it's, hopefully, it's enterprising, wow, enterprising people looking at this and seeing that there's gonna be a need. But...
Well, right now, with the current regulations, enterprising people aren't looking to solve the economic issue, they're just looking to get paid more for taking your trash. So if they want to divert more trash from trash to recycling, there's no regulation on telling recycling places, you have to accept more things than you say is making your recycled product impure. In other words, make your recycling processing better. Because if you don't do that, it won't matter. And again, I'm getting back to the, to fix the problem, you gotta go to the manufacturers and put the burden on them. And my recommendation is, you put the purchase of the trash and recycling at the point of sale. So manufacturers, if they want to sell you something cheaper, they have to reduce the trash they're sending you with the product you're buying in order to save money, and therefore... But if you don't start there, you're never gonna solve the end-of-the-stream thing. You're just gonna keep wishing someday we can shoot a rocket to the sun and get rid of all our trash.
So, one of the things that they did was, in one of the towns when I went to this December meeting, was the fact that the town did hire an outside company, right? And they separate recycling from the trash. I don't know how they did this, and it was a miracle. They had a group of people who were willing to go to certain streets, and they would check the trash, check the recycling, and say, this is not it. And then they would put a sticker on the bag and such to say, you know, just to let you know, this isn't really recycling, you've got trash that's in here. People hope it's recycling, but wanted to throw it out, because it's not, not really recycling.
I was told directly by DEP in a Worcester Selectmen's Association meeting, you can throw your pizza box in the recycling as long as you don't leave cheese stuck to it. So a greasy cardboard's not a problem. I go to our transfer station, and if I make an attempt to put that in there, they say, put it in the trash.
That's right. That's...
So DEP is telling me things I can't do. They don't even know what you can do, they're just saying it's your problem.
Grease-contaminated cardboard's not recyclable cardboard.
But, just to show you...
Well, then, don't lie to me and say I can throw a pizza box in recycling right when you're representing the regulatory agency.
It must be a different regulatory agency. But anyway, so can I just finish it? So what happened?
I'm sorry, I'm just explaining my frustration with this.
What happened with one of the towns was, they wanted to lower their overall costs, you know, to the homeowner and to the town for what it was costing. So that's why they went out into the street and had this committee just tell people and show people what can be recycled and what cannot. They were able to lower their cost of taking the trash recycling away, and that helped them on their bottom line. So I'm just saying, and DEP is willing to give monies to help make this work, to, to look at this situation in different towns, if the town is willing to work, you know, with them. But I think that's a difficult job.
I do have a question.
Yep.
How did it save them money?
For, per ton. You know, if they're gonna say they're gonna charge you $70 a ton for taking away your trash recycling, and you got it dropped to $50 to $60 a ton, that's how you're saving your money.
But that's what, I mean, how did you get that price reduction? How is somebody you're selling the recycling to saying, oh, look, your product is now clean, when they're looking at dumpsters full of recycling? I'm just curious how we know this.
Sorry, if I could...
Go ahead.
I've been doing a couple of recycling forums, and the lower your contamination rate is, the better price you're gonna get. So when it goes to the municipal recycling facility, they put it through a scanner, and they, they have a way of calculating how much contamination is in each batch. So DEP has funding available for educational programs and the one that you've described to, for your specific facility to educate... to, for your specific facility to educate people in Barry on what you can and can't throw away. So there are a few different, I think, sort of template tools that DEP has that you could implement, and there are other great programs that you could look into.
Right, and Andrea right now, Board of Health, she has about ten thousand dollars that's in account from all the things that the town really has been doing over the years. And it's funny, she and I, we're just having a little discussion, and she was mentioning the fact that what they can do is work on a flyer to help educate people and, you know, you can, what some towns do is they send it out with their taxes, or they send it out with their water sewer bills. But they, but there is some money so that they can send out pamphlets and, and put up big boards to down at the recycling center to say, this is what you can do and this is what you can't do.
Because exactly what you're saying, there's variation between Barry's dump and Fitchburg's.
Yeah.
And people wouldn't necessarily know that if they're not intimately familiar with-
Is that where this grant money will be a source for those publications to get those things out?
Correct, and there's a company that the state works with, Tiger Press, that they already have the templates made up, they already have forms made up, they have flyers made up that you just, you know, you just have to work it through for your town.
A lot of people really don't understand what's what and why. I, I thought you said in party presentation that the state's looking to have the household tonnage of recycling go down per household as well.
Recycling or trash?
Recycling, so they want, they want-
Trash, the Paltersburg dump.
Yeah, they want to reduce the trash, not the recycling.
Well, I thought they wanted an overall reduction of-
The recycling.
Oh, okay.
Which you can't do.
And, and which quite frankly now is the most difficult part because we get nothing, they're mandating that we can't bury it or do anything with it, but there's nothing to do with it right now, and that's, that's the problem.
Is there still, as far as you understand, regulations on how long a transfer station can hold a product before it has to leave site?
Don't know anything about that at all.
Because I know originally, uh, it was actually the Board of Health guy there, uh-
Mark Popham?
Popham, Mark Popham brought it up, saying that like, we had talked about maybe trying to-
You can't store it.
Store glass onsite or store cardboard onsite and identify the highest market rate at the time you transfer it.
You have to be-
And he said you only have like sixty days or ninety days before you have to get it onsite, it doesn't even matter if you have the space to hold it.
Unless you're designated recycling facility-
Correct, because that's Gorton, Gorton and Tieddon.
Which now comes, right, and now comes a certain storage limits and how it's stored, where it's stored, proximity to other things that it's stored, there's a lot of hoops to jump through to get that stored. That's why I suggested if we did that, we could designate someplace else possibly that we could store it, but it's just such a risky venture now. The, talking to Groton in the past, which I've done extensively before we had this conversation, they said it was ebbs and flows, that the price was constantly up and down and up, and it's in a low now, it's gonna come back up, and they're waiting for it to come back up, but the way things are looking, it's not coming back up.
Right.
Not anytime soon until people figure out something else to do with, and someone will, someone's gonna figure out what to do with recycling, they'll find a way to make money on it, and it'll start flowing again, but right now, it's not the case.
Quick question, in any of your discussions with anybody, it doesn't even have to be, it could just be someone on the street you're talking to randomly, how important is it for us and Solid Waste Solutions or Systems, Solutions, getting their people on site to enforce these recycling policies? And enforce these, bag trash has to be in a purchased bag. Because guarantee you, every time I go to the transfer station, there's somebody throwing black bags of trash in the trash, or pizza boxes in the cardboard, or something, and it doesn't matter how many signs you put up, if people look at the neighbor and say, he's throwing five black bags in, who's gonna question me if I throw in an additional bag that... So this is another thing where if we want to actually do this, do you have a recommendation on how we approach this? Because what's gonna happen is, as much as people are unhappy with the price, they're really gonna be happy if they pay the price and then they're being told they're not doing it right. So in other words, how do you get over that hurdle? Because we have set a precedent on what since Solid Waste Solutions has been there, and I'm not beating them up, I don't know enough about all the ins and outs of what's going on. I'm just suggesting though, that when you go there and witness that almost on a weekly basis, and you're using a third party to run it, you have limited to no control of what you just mentioned. You can send flyers all day long, but if they show up and can do whatever they want, it won't matter. And by the time we finally make a decision on, we want to improve our tonnage in recycling, the hill is so much steeper. So I didn't know if you guys had a recommendation on how to approach that, because we're dealing with Solid Waste Solutions who primarily answers to the Board of Health, because the Board of Health kicked me in the butt when I said the Board of Selectment had any role in this process. And so I've just backed off. So if that's how the Board of Health wants to manage it, that's their call.
Wouldn't you think, Andrew, that working with the town administrative selectmen, the Board of Health, working with somebody like Mark Popham, or working with Iain Comden from DEP, if you got that group of people, and Patrick, or one of his representatives from Solid Waste Solutions, that's what you could do, is you could meet as a group to say, you know, we know what's happening through the state DEP, how they want to limit, cut down back on trash and recycling, help us have a plan to make it work, and Solid Waste, how can you help us make it work so we're more educated? Because if we're more educated, then we will naturally try to reduce our trash and our recycling.
Yeah, I mean, I think it should be more like a, you know, almost a representative task force, somebody from, you know, representing each, one member from the Board, one member from Board of Health, and then-
Yes.
Those are the two basically kind of going after, have a almost quarterly meetings with them to figure out process and how you can kind of move forward. I think that's gonna be the best way to kind of stir that and figure out what direction we're going in.
I agree with that.
When the Waste Management ran the facility down there, the town used to have a Board of Health agent part-time that monitored what went in. You know, they, they would charge for bulky items when large things went in, and they watched for bags and stickers. And I would expect that that's something that the company running it now should be doing. They should be monitoring what goes in on those bags, that's only bags going in, they should be making sure those stickers-
And it's the Board of Health's job, it's a third-party thing.
Yeah.
Solid Waste Solutions is no different than Waste Management, it's Board of Health to ensure that that's happening if they believe it's warranted.
Well-
And I'll leave it at that, if they believe it's warranted, I don't want to go there.
But the discussion could begin, the discussion could be-
We tried it the last time, they didn't want to listen to me, so I'm gonna let someone else take that lead if they want to be an ambassador.
When Waste Manager ran it, they ran the facility. However, the town sold the stickers, and the town managed what went into those bins, and Waste Management handled it from there. So Waste Management took the recycling, the trash, the cardboard, the metals, and they took the dumpsters, you know, full of trash away and swapped them out. But on the input side, what came in, the town ran the stickers and the town monitored the people and what they dumped. And Resource Management has been, Solid Waste Solutions Department has been hired to run the whole facility, which should include what goes into those containers, because they are the ones selling the stickers and, and the bags, and they should be monitoring what goes in there.
Especially because it saves them money.
It does, because if they're not getting paid for bags, and then they don't know what's in their bags.
Doesn't save them any money at all, doesn't change, or they would have come back, all they're gonna do is say, I need to raise my rates. There's no incentive for them to change what's coming in and out. Because they can walk away on a contract year when they want to, and they don't have to offer to do it again after a contract expires. So they're making their money enough to say, I can still do this for two more years, status quo. It comes down to the Board of Health in this town is the registered owner-
That's right.
-of that with DEP.
That's right.
Which means they have the complete one hundred percent authority, local jurisdiction, to make sure it's run properly. And I leave it at that.
So why not send a letter to the Board of Health, you know, to make it more formal, if that's what you feel is acceptable? And just, and just say, could a group of us get together and work on this issue, we think it's important, just as an issue for the town of Barry, to do that, because it's the right thing to do.
Did you inquire with the Board of Health to see if they're, you know, up to speed with what the DEP's looking for in reduction of, of trash and increasing the recycling, reducing the trash? Did you have any discussion with them on...
Well, that's, that's why I had talked to Andrea about that, and, you know, she would certainly relay that to her. She would certainly relay that, you know, to her board. Didn't have an opportunity to see them first before we saw you, just because of logistics. So, so we'll certainly give them this information so that they will have this information too.
I find it hard to believe that this country in general's gonna keep burying trash. It's, it's, we can't.
Before we go to a whole new topic, I do know that Neil had a question about something-
I would, but I'd like to ask Kathy a question, and she's willing to answer it. Of all the towns that you investigated, how many are, is it an expense for the town? Over and above maybe what is being charged off to the...
Oh, many.
Many, most?
Most everyone?
Yeah.
Everyone. So I have a thought, if I may. It's not something I haven't thought of proposed before, but I'll leave out where I proposed it, because it didn't happen. But I think, Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely right, you're chasing buckets of steam when you're trying to catch, you know, which, what went in, what bag, where, and who, and, you know, what bin it was put in, percentage. I think you've got to go to the horse's mouth and stop the horse from, you know, eating so much. And I think the easiest way to do that would be collectively across the Commonwealth to get with all the other towns and file a lawsuit against the companies that are producing all these goods by weight or by some other means to reconcile where, where it's being produced and, and assess the charge back to them. That would make quite a statement, especially if most of the towns in the Commonwealth came together and said, enough, we can't, we're addressing this after the fact? That's what I'm saying, you're chasing buckets of steam and address it at the, at the beginning of the pipe before it's made, and there's all kinds of ways you could incentivize that, and that's another subject for, you know, continuation. But I think that's where, that's where, that's where the rubber hits the road, and I have one more thought-
Can I finish that?
Sure.
What you were just saying? But I think in part that's being done because of the DEP setting up new regulations.
I'm saying, go across the Commonwealth, that would end-
DEP has no regulation on the manufacturing, just on what you do with it once it ends up in your house.
Right, so, but that's, that's a discussion, that's not, you know, that's just a whole thing. I have a question, you said a couple times in your presentation about a hundred dollars a ton for hauling? I don't know what that means exactly, Kathy. Is that hauling, hauling where and hauling by what means and...
When they come in, they come into your town and they say they have to, they have to take, they have to get rid of it, they weigh it, and then they charge for that.
Okay.
We averaged it out to be ninety dollars a ton.
Ninety dollars a ton, is that average? And, and so that's whoever is, vendor is that is taking it away? That's, that's universal price?
Whoever, whatever your contract is with whatever town you are and what the contract you have.
So is there any cost?
There's four ways taller, there's four ways taller in the state of Massachusetts right now.
Okay, that's what I was talking about.
Is four.
So collectively, is there any, because you said the benefit is working collectively, amongst, gathering a bunch of towns together, but then they would trigger MIPA regs and so forth, but...
That has to, that has to do with if the, if, or something with the town of Barry, if the town of Barry decided that for them it would work out, whether it's trash or recycling or both. That's, that's what a thought was, that might be workable in the future.
So there's only four certified vendors? And that certification is state certification?
Yep, to be in the state.
Can haul it outside the state?
SWS, Casala, Waste Management, and there's one more.
And so you can't haul it outside the state without using one of those vendors?
Possibly.
I believe those vendors have to do the hauling molds in the state.
Just another thought, as an asset in this town, we have a rail here and down.
That's right.
Just a thought.
That's right. Anyways, okay, we've taken up enough time.
I really appreciate your time and the effort a lot. If we had follow-up questions, are any of you interested in listening and possibly pursuing new topics if we reach out to you?
I'm willing to listen, and we'll see what happens from there.
I, I think, as I started to say, that there's no way we keep burying trash in this country, and we already are in this state, it's already getting shipped out of state. I think incinerators have to be a very viable option, they may put more restrictions on it, but I can't see any way they're gonna shut them down. And obviously, you can't sign on to an incinerator now because they're all at capacity.
Well, that's what's happening in the southeast, in the southeast. You know, what they're doing is, China is buying these factories up, and they're bringing the dirty, dirty trash in, they are then cleaning it up there, and then shipping it, you know, back to China to be used. That's one of the things that's happening right now, you know, in the, in the country. There's a massive glass factory, too, that's coming into New Jersey. So they're doing that. Anyways, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again, much appreciated.
And thank Michael, he did all of the number of paperwork and the metal stuff.
I really appreciate all the time you guys put in, thank you, Mike.
Brand new report, appreciate it.
See you later.
Much appreciated.
What's that?
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm around, yeah.
Thank you. Andrew, thanks, I'll see you tomorrow.
The, what Bron does, the glass, now they have a grinder, it pulverizes it, it makes, makes, isn't that nice? It makes two or three different, two or three different qualities of grindings, and they use them for different things.
See, they were using them for beer bottles, and they're not now.
And what he's, and what they're doing though, is they deal with the towns, the towns bring the glass in, but they have to haul it out. So they bring it in, Groton grinds it, and they have to haul the dust back out and do something with it.
But they're using it for their own backfilling or...
They do that some too, but, but they still need, but they still need to get rid of a lot of it too, because they get so much emphasis, when towns hauling two tons of glass, they haul out two tons of grindings. But they have a good municipal agreement with other towns, and with their cans and their cardboard and everything else, and the cardboard was doing a hundred and twenty a ton, and cobingled paper ninety a ton, and now that's all just gone too. It's, everything's gone kaput.
Next item, I would like to, I'm guessing the master plan?
Yeah.
Here's also the next one where we have esteemed guests coming to help us, so please come forward. What is CMRPC still waiting on? I don't want to...
Just right now?
That's what I thought, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't...
Oh, we're on my-
No, I appreciate you sticking around, but if I can make it, I'd rather that than push to the very last item.
Thank you very much for putting me on the agenda. And I'd like to say I'm really unhappy about following Kathy. She's organized, she has a binder with all the background figures, she has handouts, I don't have any of that.
But she's been working on this for a year and a half, so it's a little different than what you've been getting.
Well, I feel a little better than-
Thank you.
But I gotta give her credit, after the annual town meeting, she asked me what else I was looking for, and it took more direction on stuff I wanted to see in that report, and she did a hell of a job getting it all together. Very comprehensive, very, very, very good job.
Again-
I have to say though about that, I agree with you, the solution, or a big part of the solution is at the beginning-
Yeah.
-of the packaging and all the used stuff.
Put a surcharge on it, so that portion feeds the end of the line, so our costs are reduced not only by reduction of trash, it's because the original purchaser's already participating, it's just like your bottle return, except make it much more severe.
If you had a can return and everything else return, you know, all companies had to do it. I mean, they did it to the beverage industry, they could do it to any industry.
They did, but then they didn't because they decided water doesn't need it. I'm just gonna bite, it's the most bottles that go to the trash or recycle.
Well, it is now, it wasn't back then.
But that's a whole different topic, I'd like to get right to what you're coming, I'd like to get right to what you're coming, or we could talk about trash all night.
Okay, thank you. I want to talk about a master plan for the town of Berry. Over the past few years, when I've been working on the planning board, things come up where we're talking about, you know, redoing the zoning regulations, revising the zoning regulations. There's been discussions about we need increased amounts of land in zone industrial, also business commercial. We've talked about higher density housing. We don't really have a process where we can do that now. Senior housing, we've, people have raised issues about a historical district around the common here. Those are all things that are good ideas, but we don't have a master plan to fit that into. And what a master plan does, it lays out a vision for the future. It says, you know, what do we have, what do we value, what do we want to keep, and let's lay out this vision for where we're going to be in five years and 10 years. We want to create, the, the master plan, it creates a roadmap of where do you want to go and how are you going to get there? It identifies programs and changes that will allow Berry to keep, you know, its unique characteristics and at the same time, remaining economical and physically responsible. You know, we talk about attracting more business. Just as an aside, I just came across this a while back, the, the amount of business commercial land currently zoned in Berry is 10 acres. It's 0.2% of all the land in Berry.
See, where?
Which I didn't, so you want to bring your business in, bring a small business. But anyway, the idea is you identify the goals and the objectives for the development of Berry, and then you have a plan of how you're going to implement that. And it can't be something, you do a plan and you put it on the shelf. I mean, it's got to be, it's got to be the stakeholders, volunteers, residents, and, and people in the town government in Berry to, to take a part in this and to try and move it forward. And we, you know, we, we have a lot of ideas that I think are good ideas of where we'd like to see things done, but we don't really have an overarching plan that says, here's where we're going, here's what we want Berry to look like in 10 years. And then you can compare that to what you want to do and say, how do these things fit in? This fits in very nicely, or this doesn't fit in at all. It takes a lot of work from the public aspects of, of public meetings. We have a good group that's already started, the Berry, the Business Community Group. That's a really good start, and that group would, I think, play a, you know, pivotal role in, in bringing something like this about from the business standpoint. The areas that they look at in a, in a master plan, housing, economic development, land use, open space, we already have an open space document from 2010 that the implementation hasn't been what we'd like it to be. It looks at natural resources, cultural resources, historical resources, transportation, town facilities, water, wastewater treatment, solid waste. All those things are part of the master plan. And what they look at is where are we at today, what do we have, where do we want to be? And part of this is implementation of how do we get there? And so that's, that's my, that's my spiel. I'm here to, to talk about that and to ask if you guys think that might be something that might be of value, and if you do, then the next step, I think, is talk about it a little more detail.
I am in 100% agreement and full support of this.
Great.
I think if you're at the last meeting, you know.
My backing all the way.
Yeah, great, okay. Well, what I'd like to do next, there's a lot of people that can do a master plan, a lot of consultants and stuff. CMRPC is one. CMRPC is folks I know, I'd like to bring a couple of the folks from there in to talk to this segment. They can tell you more about the nuts and bolts of how it works and talk about resources too. And I, I don't really know much about that.
Okay.
And that's why I'm a big picture guy.
I know the, the city of Worcester has been trying to update or finalize a master plan as well, and it's, it's, the interesting thing here is the size of a city or municipality doesn't matter at all on the master plan. You still have every category you're trying to, to plan out, you still have whatever square footage you got, and you got to balance that with the desires of the occupants of the town and try to work towards a, a common goal. So it's, it's not really any more challenging for Worcester, but it's still really challenging. So it's, don't get me wrong, now, the one benefit is Worcester has a lot more resources in-house between their planning boards, their various boards, and then all the people they pay to support those boards. We have a much larger in-house group to fill in the gaps. So this, the harder part, I would say, in a smaller community is getting the people involved and committed to keep working until you get to an end result.
Yeah, and it's, it's not really done, done, ever. I mean, you.
It's a living document.
You revise your master plan, you say, you know, what did we do well, what did we do not so well, and what do we need to change to, you know, to catch these things up? I asked CMRPC for a, a recent master plan that they had done, and they have one from Westbrook Field. And I asked for something that was a town roughly Berry size and, you know, not something, not a place like Grafton or Worcester or anything, but I looked at, I'll send you, I'll send you the link to this plan. It's on, on the website at Westbrook Field. And it's, it's a good one to look at because it's sort of similar to Berry, well, some differences, but it's, it's relatively new and will give you a good idea. It's, you know, if you get, if you get really into it, it's 350-something pages, so you can, you can.
It's light reading before bed.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I, I did read the executive summary, I didn't read the whole thing. But I, but I looked at it, and one of the things that jumped out at me was the public participation piece of it. I mean, they don't go off and write all this stuff and say, here, here's your plan. They, they look at what you have, they look at where you want to go, and then they have public meetings and they say, here's where we think Berry wants to go, what do you people think about that? And you get input. You get input from, from town employees too, because they have a, they have a, a unique perspective on what's going on in town and an idea of where they'd like to see some of the pieces go.
So a lot of the draft, review, response, redraft, review, response, keep tweaking.
Right.
Eventually say, this is today's plan, and you continue for the next five years drafting and redrafting for the five-year update. But start in year one. I'm sorry, but don't wait till year five or it'll take another five years for me to get it done.
Okay, well, I'll.
Do you guys have thoughts on this? I just?
I, I started to say that we talked during our interviews, we all briefly touched on this, and we seemed to have a like mind in the fact that our concern for revenues in the town and revenue sources is going to be developing a new business in, in housing, and those are going to be key things in Berry. What kind of business do we want in town? How do we want the housing to stay? Do we want a housing development? Do we want to stay with single-family homes? Where are these going to be? What type of business is going to be a fit here? And this is why I kicked out the idea of an incinerator plan. We have those areas down south Berry that, that were industrial and, and the mills and even the old dump site that sell those huge pieces of land that might fit something like that. But those are things we need to discuss, and people have to have input. Do they, do they want that? Do they, are they opposed to it? I mean, what type of business do they want to see and how did, how does everybody see their town going before we can move forward too far? And we, we very happily said we had to talk to you guys before we get anywhere with this. Literally just a week ago, we said that. So glad to see you starting it, and I also support it wholeheartedly.
Great.
Along with what we're doing.
So as, again, we accept your take, you, the planning board is taking the lead on this, but as steps progress, we'd love to just, even if it's just an email to pass through the town administrator, just to say, here's where we're at, we're reaching out for volunteers for this or this or this. Because we'll continue to repeat the message in our meeting, you know, because I know sometimes our meetings don't allow for that to be easily broadcast. So sharing, we can keep repeating it. In other words, that's another way we can try to help facilitate the process of spreading the word. So anything we can do, I think we'll, we would try to accommodate as much as we can.
And anytime we look for public input, we make use of those sign boards and advertise it and try to get people involved, because that's, it's not going to go anywhere without the involvement. People got to want this.
That's right.
We want it, but it's got to be in, in their vision, not what we think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Kathy.
Yeah, sure. If you have any questions about that or if you want to switch over.
All right, have a good night. Well, we put a small dent in these papers.
I would suggest the next thing that more people may or may not have any type of discussion they would like on would be the discussion interim town administrator. Anything else on here you think should be a, everything?
Well.
The public, the public hearing center?
We did that before you got here.
Okay.
We went forward.
I was told that you had already reviewed it at the last, the meeting I missed, so you didn't have anything bad about it at the time.
We kind of discussed it, yeah, we kind of discussed it and liked it, but had to announce it and put it out, so I said, to that effect we had, so we could get something done.
All right, well, with that, let's move to the discussion and vote on interim town administrator. We conducted interviews with three applicants, I'm sure I'm getting my days right, a week ago. And since then, one of the three has, oh, let's put it on hold, since you made it, let's, I'd like to change the topic, we're going to go back to a line item here, to a min CPC Berry post-community agreement. We can expedite the process if you'd like, we'll do it right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's a, it's a simple matter, it's almost an administrative thing.
We've been busy, believe it or not, so it really is okay.
So, essentially, when we originally drafted this post-community agreement, it was way before bylaws got voted on and presented to the town. This was the first host-community agreement we entered into. In it originally had a couple clauses that spoke about local licensing fees would potentially cancel the whole contract, and nobody's interested in canceling the whole contract. So CPC has come before the board with a recommendation to revise certain clauses so that we're all on the same page and we're comfortable with it. So with the big picture statement, I'll bring it to Kathy Iandoli, who is representing CPC at the table today.
Yeah, I mean, I think you said everything. So it, this was, I think it was almost a cut and paste job between agreement to agreement, and the language just doesn't make any sense anymore, and I think it benefits both of us to just take it up. So if you're comfortable doing that, nothing else changes, it's just that if you do put, like, if you do impose licensing fees, then we're subject to that, which we would be anyway. And the language, it was actually a little bit contradictory because it had said, you know, the agreement would be void, but you're still subject to the licensing fees. So I think it was just, it was just a cut and paste. And Dean also just put together a project update for the board, just, basically, we're going to, we're operational now, we should have, we should be fully operational by spring, and then, then they have one sign following here, but.
Sorry, I, I misstated your last name.
Say again?
I misstated your last name, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's the last one.
That's, I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay. No, that, that's fine.
That'll teach me.
No, that's fine. So that's when the, the 3% payments will come in. So that's really all, it was just, it was just help to keep it.
So I don't know if the other members of the board have had a chance to review the section they're looking to amend, if you had any comments on the proposed amendment. I think all of them are on page four, the last page.
I did put an and/or in one of the other.
Yes, I saw that too.
Yeah, just because we're not just one mini town, and manufacturing probably might happen, but it's just going to be broad.
May want a cultivation and/or.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Simple enough, isn't it?
Exactly.
While the members of the board are reviewing it, does anybody in the crowd have any thoughts or topics on this? Pretty much, again, generically, it means they're going to accept a local licensing fee that was included in the last bylaw that got approved. We actually haven't set the licensing fee schedule yet.
Right, and, and talking with the other towns that have gone through some process, it's been just basically issuance of a license rather than any fee associated with it. So any, any other town that's, that's established a license has not, has not attached a fee to it.
Well, they're foolish. At a minimum, I would have a similar fee that we have for alcohol, where in my opinion, it would be a cultivator would be similar to a package store, and you start getting into the higher potential retail sales, then you become more like a restaurant-type onsite. And that would be my recommendation when we go before, so we'll have to tell whoever's the next town administrator that. But that would be my recommendation, because eventually there will be a cost involved to the town just to administrate the licensing process. So I wouldn't want to do it for a lot, I'm not trying to do it for revenue stream so much, it's just.
To cover your costs.
There you go. Did you have any?
Since you have a little, I was just curious, so my thing, there's no severability in that document? There's no line that?
Oh, this is actually part of one of those severability paragraphs where rather than automatically being severed because we're saying they have to pay a local licensing fee, which, again, back when it was drafted, they said, if, in the event you do that, this contract ends.
We can get out.
And we were like, are you really sure? And they were like, not really. And then we kind of said, this doesn't apply really to the current agreement and the intent, so they came back and suggested a couple edits that kind of just said, the local licensing fee isn't a real issue. We're not coming after them saying, you owe us $10,000 to work in Berry. So it's, it's not excessive or necessarily painful to either party. So that's my understanding. So to answer your question, yes, and it actually happens to be that section we are revising.
Perfect.
Do I, do you have more you want to look into, or I would just be waiting for a motion otherwise?
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the amended HCA agreement with patient caretaker connection LLC.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? All right, let's call for both.
Aye.
Aye. So we'll get a non-marked up?
There you go.
Oh, yeah? You've double-checked that this is not marked up specially differently?
Yes, it is special.
Agreement dated.
She's doing better, she's not that drunk yet. She feels good.
I had emailed the board and they got an out of office, and I went back, so she said, well, can we be in the hospital? Yeah, I was.
Do we have to rework some of the wording up here?
Um, I think we can just put the old date.
Because the last sentence says the agreement supersedes, and it lists agreements.
I mean, I can clean that up.
But the agreement dated, leaving blank assumes that it's superseding this agreement, because you're leaving that for the day. So I'm just.
Yeah. I'll work with you. Right at the top.
But it, again, it's administrative, a little cleanup stuff, so.
See you on Thursday, we'll have the cleaned up app.
So am I, am I good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure thing. Okay.
Thank you very much. Kathy. Strange, I've worried.
Thanks for, thanks for.
Thank you for the update. Trying to get through it.
All right, now we'll go to the discussion vote on interim town administrator position. Again, we had three applicants last Tuesday, we all interviewed. One of the three, a couple days later, withdrew their application, so we were down to two. Todd Miller and Heather Fudziewicz.
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 I believe.
So I'll kind of open the floor to either of you if you'd like to start the discussion.
Well, it did make the decision easier when Ms. Schindler dropped from the running. Felt like there was a lot of talent in the room that we saw to speak with.
I agree. Where's my markup from the last time? When we did the interview, so if you didn't attend or see the interview process, we each had kind of a standard 11-question form, and we were internally marking it up for ease of reference back to say, okay, 1 through 10, how did they answer this question? 1 through 10, how did they do that? So we could kind of take that, reflect on it as we reviewed our, our thoughts and notes for that coming today, hopefully. We are comfortable and ready to make a decision. If there's discussion, great. If not, I'll take a motion and then we can discuss. If not, I'll take a motion and then we can discuss after someone makes a motion.
Well, I'll give discussion if anyone's going to start. I was very excited when Todd applied for this position because Todd, as you know, has, has been involved in the community grant in helping us look into the development of the town. He has intricate and depth knowledge of our wishes and a lot of the townsfolk's wishes for the development, the direction of the Town of Berry. He also was familiar with our finances. And he's, you know, very familiar with the granting process and dealing with state agencies. And I, you know, was very excited that he was applying for this position. That being said, we've had other, other candidates that applied that have a great depth of knowledge and work experience in the administrative positions specifically. And this is why it's, it's important that we broke down this interim position from a full-term position. It'd be a great challenge to balance the, the knowledge and experience for a full-term position, full-time, that those people offer that have done this before with the personal knowledge of the area that Todd brings in. And that would make the consideration for a permanent position very difficult. But given the task in the short term, in the interim position, where we need somebody that can step right in to the budgeting process and to union negotiations and the day-to-day operations without having to figure anything out, the more adept somebody is at that, and the more experience they have, the more beneficial that's going to be to this town and this very crucial timing of this turnover. And therefore, my recommendation is we go with, for the interim administrator with Heather Budrowitz.
I agree. I really like Todd Miller's energy, his knowledge of the region, his desire to do well for the Town of Berry. But I do know that the last time I was involved with a similar process, I don't recall if you were involved, or if that was pre-you.
The administrative section?
When Heather left and we had an interim.
I was not here for the interim.
That's what I thought.
I, I applied for the interim.
I, I remember that now. And when we made that decision, we chose somebody that also kind of came to the table whose primary municipal experience was in planning. Whether it was private working municipal or municipal, there wasn't a lot of that administrative understanding, kind of the state contacts, the state deadlines, the other contacts with other town administrators and other mass municipal association groups. I think one thing you get with the experience that you can't very well define is your relationships with those other people in the state. And the whole process of, if you hit a bump in the road, how do you get through it quickest? And I think Heather brings a lot more of that than Todd does at this time. And for an interim, you don't have a lot of time to figure it out. So in a way, what Heather would be doing is coming and just learning, where did Andrew leave it off? And then how do I step in to at least get through this fiscal year and the hiring process of a new town administrator? Pretty much things that through her resume and stuff, she's kind of walked already more than once. So the, the method, the means and methods of getting to that end result is not new to her. But the people in town are new. Where did Andrew leave it? And where does she need to help finish it? Learning every town's different definition of a town administrator's role versus a board of selectmen's role versus what they think anybody else in town is supposed to do. That's a whole different story, and everybody's going to learn that when they show up. Todd has probably more understanding of how Berry sees that than maybe Heather because Todd has lived it, whether when he was associate member on the planning board. He's been the regional planning position that Hardwick hired, but we all helped fund. When it comes to understanding how the general population in Berry view, what they expect from a town administrator, I'd say Todd would have the leg up on that.
Community in that, in general.
But for an interim, I don't know how much that is important as long as when they come to the table, they listen to the boards they have to listen to, whether it's finance committee, board of selectmen, whatever, to get through this, depending on if we're lucky, three months to six months. And I would be concerned with bringing someone in that isn't more intimately aware of the process procedures and deadlines required to meet things that are going on at this time. So an automatic familiarity, so you don't always have to ask the town clerk, okay, something's coming up, how many days before that do we have to have this ready? How many days before that do we have to have that ready? Because these are all state-mandated periods of time between elections and town meetings. You have to post and advertise. Again, when you've worked in administration, it's a little easier recall. If you haven't, you really need to rely on those different boards and departments to come to you and say, hey, I need this by such and such. And it, I'm not saying, we got great department heads. They would do that. But it's not the same as anticipating yourself and being prepared for that. And I think Heather would step in better in that case. So I kind of support Heather because of that reason. That's the biggest thing I can say is, I really like Todd's attitude, his desire. But it's a very focused planning background he brings to the table. And I don't think at this time it's appropriate for what we need.
Yeah, Greg and Matt said things similar to how I feel and that, just looking at the experience, Heather has eight, almost nine years direct town admin experience, and Todd doesn't. Although Todd, I've known Todd for a really long time. And I think that he has the best interest of the town and the region at heart, 100%. But given the, this timeframe and all of our constraints and needing someone to be able to walk in the door and know how to be a town administrator without that steep and scary learning curve, I am suggesting that we go with Heather Budrowitz as well.
If this were August 1st, it'd be a very different debate right now, but it's not.
Yes, Sam.
Thank you. Considering that these are both interim positions for a short period of time, do, does some of our possible available funding allow for us to benefit from both of those folks' experiences for the benefit of the town? I know that Doug Martin spoke about a master plan which every business needs. And this, this young lady has experienced another area. And I don't know the finances, but that might be an interesting option, a thought, if we could think clearly that we're talking about the future of Berry at this precipitous point.
We do, we do pay for Todd's services currently. And he would have to leave that position to take the administrative position.
Excuse me?
We do, we do pay towards Todd's services currently. And he would have to leave that position in order to take on the administrative position.
I'm not sure what position he's currently at.
It's a regional position that's helping look for the development in the towns, in the community.
He can survive the town.
Resources.
Well, I don't know where the, I don't know where the finances are in this town. And we just buy, they fire traffic statistics, we do other things. But we never have a master plan. We never had some real focused directions in the planning board that we have now. And we have some opportunities for people who may be available to help us two-fold. My thought.
Okay.
Whatever that means.
I appreciate it.
I think the decision, the way we're talking about it would give us that because we'd still have the benefit of Todd working for us, towards our planning and towards our community development that he's doing now in his current job. So we'd keep, be able to keep him in that position while we have the new administrator. And then when we post for a permanent position, certainly Todd can come back and reapply, as, as could the interim administrator, and make another decision for the full-time position when that comes up. But in the meantime, during this interim period, we will benefit from having, if, if we choose Heather, both Todd and Heather working for us.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move we offer a, the job to Heather Budrowitz and have Todd Miller as an alternate. Second the motion.
Any last comments or questions or thoughts? Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 So.
The text is sent.
And how do you spell Heather's last name? W-I?
C-Z.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I copied that from the resume department because that's how I spelled it. I just, I have to pull mine back out.
Rolls off the top. B-U-D-R-E-W-I-C-Z.
Wow.
Yep. You got it right? Yep, got it right. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
You're welcome. Like, we're welcome.
Anytime, anytime. So let's see.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sam.
Very well.
All right, I guess the next major item should be the primary election and town election warrant, discussion items.
Let's start with the primary election.
Just need a vote to sign on both of them.
Do I have copies of any of them? I didn't sign nothing until I read it. So this is the primary, March, Tuesday, the third day of March, 2020. We don't write the date in, just reference Tuesday, the third day of March?
I have to, you have the year.
Okay. I mean, I guess that makes it so it's fairly easy not to make the mistake.
And certified by the council?
Good enough then.
Third day of March being March 3rd.
I was misreading that as the third Tuesday in March. Thank you. Thank you. I am completely incorrect. Let's start all over. Okay. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at Precinct 1 at Senior Center, 557 South Berry Road, South Berry; Precinct 2, American Legion, Post 2, formerly Post 404; 450 South Berry Road, South Berry, on Tuesday, the third day of March, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purposes: to cast their votes in the presidential primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices: Presidential preference, State Committee man, State Committee woman, Town Committee. I'm not going to read the rest of this whole sheet, but that's the gist of it. The rest of it is almost more administrative places where people sign and date and say when things happened. Meaning when things got posted. Anybody have any questions or thoughts on this? Go right in.
I have no questions or thoughts about this.
Nor do I.
All right then. Do we have a motion to approve the warrant? Is that what we're doing, approving?
Motion to sign the warrant.
Motion to sign the warrant. Thank you, Ellie. Have a great night.
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
I move that we, or did they say approve?
Sign.
I move that we sign this primary ballot warrant.
For, for March 3rd?
March 3rd.
March 3rd, 2020.
Second the motion.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Here fail not and make return, this one's June 21st. Given under our hands this blank day of January 2020. This is the 21st?
21st, yep.
I will sign, and each of you can sign. Do we have to sign every one of these?
Yep.
Yep.
What's another?
Well, if you unclip them.
They all get posted to those different locales.
Unclip it, we can stop passing them around.
I didn't put the date on that one. 21st, just above where I signed.
You know, I'd have thought by now my penmanship would have gotten so much better. It's getting worse.
It gets more constant.
More consistent, but worse, yes.
I'll tell you this, for all of those that are being taught at a young age about how to sign things, remember, once you set something as your signature, you're stuck with it. So if you've got to do a lot of signing in your future, think about that as you start signing your name at a young age.
X, that's my mark.
In a way, that is potentially the easiest to forge, but also the easiest to do. So find that balance. It's like an easy password, a bad password.
Think of all the time you save. Two lines.
I think I have about half the letter is my last name.
Thank you so much, John. All right. The next warrant.
We got one.
Oh yeah, I gave that to you instead of him. My bad. All right. Town of Berry Annual Town Election, Monday, April 6, 2020, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Warrant. On Monday, the sixth day of April, 2020, at 8:00 in the, before noon, until 8:00 p.m., the town's essentially going to be voting for the following positions: Moderator for one year, Selectman for three years, Assessor for three years, Board of Health for three years, Water Commissioner for three years, Sewer Commissioner for three years, Berry Housing Authority, five years, Felton Field Commission for three years, Felton Field Commissioner for one year, Library Trustee Members for three years, two of them, one Planning Board Member for five years, one Planning Board Member for two years, one Planning Board Associate Member for one year, Quabbin Regional School Committee Member for three years. Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we sign the warrant for April the 6th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 As it gets quicker, it gets smaller. I start writing almost in like microscopic.
Then the fatigue sets in.
Hand cramps, right?
Amendment to MVP delegate, Alicia Musgraves. What's that mean? Amendment.
So, since I am listed as the official, um. Let's say, community lead on the MVP program, um, we need to delegate somebody else who is going to take it over.
Alicia volunteered for that at the last meeting.
Yeah, she's already volunteered, she's been actively, an active participant in the, um. In the actual core team. And is a lot more versed in this than I am, so she'd be a great person to take it on anyway, so.
I ask them to put it on the agenda so we can make an official vote on it.
Sounds good.
So I make a motion that we appoint Alicia Musgraves to be our delegate for the MVP.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 And thank you for volunteering, Alicia, much appreciated. I'm down to. Requesting town property, Band of Voices, Town Hall, June twentieth.
Always ask, assume there's no conflicts?
No.
One of these days we'll get a greaseboard going, keep our own calendar of these events and just have it when we're here.
We keep it upstairs, so.
Okay.
What are you just using, like a Microsoft Office Calendar?
Google Calendar.
Google Calendar, similar concept though?
Yeah, yeah, just share between each other, so that way when things pop up, we just put it in or see that there's a.
I make a motion that we, um. Approve the use of town property for Band of Voices on, uh, June twentieth from twelve to five. It's like Wednesday, June, isn't it, just putting it?
Is Wednesday, June a setup or a practice?
It's practice, but she never gave a time, I mean, she said Wednesday, but she, on the second page, I made a copy of her email. And she's requesting for Wednesdays, she never gave a time, she just said Wednesday.
June twentieth is a Saturday.
Two, two Wednesdays prior, so.
From six thirty to nine thirty.
Right.
That's the seventeenth, did I do my math right?
The tenth and the seventeenth, right?
That rings a bell, the tenth and the seventeen.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, actually in the email specifically, it says that, okay.
Yeah, I highlighted what.
So we need to approve the use of the town property, the two Wednesdays prior.
Six thirty to nine thirty.
And seventeenth, from six thirty to nine thirty, as well as, uh, June twentieth for the event from noon till five, and. Do you want to discuss fees on that, it's technically three uses, but, um. You know, you don't wanna do a triple use fee.
Right, I mean, we figure for, for rehearsals, it's not.
That, that's what I was gonna recommend, so we just have a fee for the.
For the times that we do, we've always just, we always just give it fifty dollars.
Right, not just making note of it before we pass by without discussing it, make sure it's discussed and not just overlooked and debated after the fact, so.
Just pointing it out that it's not a change.
It would be for the standard fee, not for a triple fee.
Is there any, the only thing I would ask is. Use is fine, but on the practice sites, you're gonna come in and anything they may set out for chairs, they're gonna put back. So that you're scheduling something in between, they didn't leave something out for the next person to come into? Okay.
Maybe they're, they're regular renters of the halls.
And I know that, I'm just not used to two practices prior to one event, this seemed a little different, so I didn't know if they extended two weeks. It was gonna be, uh, we'll just leave the chairs out and we'll be back in a week and.
That's why I also wanted to bring.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, because the, um, there's a thing that uses it for Sunday service.
I forgot, they're still doing that too.
Yeah, so I make sure that everybody knows.
Okay, so on this, I actually wrote in, just to, I wrote in, I'll take the blame. Dates and times requested, she initially said Saturday, June twentieth, twelve PM, set up, five PM concert. And then she wrote Wednesday, June, so what I did is I continued that to June tenth, six thirty PM to nine thirty PM. Wednesday, June seventeenth, six thirty PM to nine thirty PM. Pulling that from the email.
And that is the times my motion was for with one fee.
I accept that.
Yeah, I will second.
Okay. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Right here, signed and date. Would that necessarily be, we haven't done it before, Board of Selectmen signing and dating that we approved this?
You could sign that. Uh, technically, I think that's supposed to be the applicant's.
Oh, that's, right, they print the name above and then they're supposed, so I'm not gonna sign and date it there. Okay. Approved conditions. Single. Fifty dollar fee. For.
We just didn't have the paperwork.
All three.
I'll have it on Thursday.
Nice.
We just have to have it before the first.
Requested.
Yeah, his pay will be, he's already working.
Yeah, we just have to have it before the first payroll's submitted, so I'll bring it on Thursday, I just, I needed a piece of paper with, just in case it turned up.
Just checking.
Nope, you still, yep, don't worry. Just, just didn't have something for you to sign yet.
No, it's just easier to refer than trying to go back and remember what meeting minute or video you had to watch, in case it got contested. And it doesn't hurt with your transition, the next person look at it, goes, oh, right, that's what. Dylan can review it to see if I lied.
Classy eyes and dot the Ts, no, wait, the other way.
Wage authorizations, I believe, Robert Lambert?
Yes. Do a step increase.
So PT is part-time, I assume, step two?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve the, uh, wage increase for Robert Lambert. To sixteen twenty-five an hour.
I second that motion.
We verified that fits the classification plan?
Yes.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
In the future, I will be having you slash Heather sign those before you ask me to sign it. You are the personnel one, by signing it, you've verified that payscale, not having me ask you. I'm being a bum, I know.
I think I sign it right before it goes downstairs.
Just like you do, nevermind. You do a lot for us, I'm just having fun with it. So, anybody out there listening, you've been great. Exactly, I'm just trying to take advantage of the last moment I have. Do either selectmen have something you'd like to report at this time?
Oh, what should we discuss, uh, see if we have an update from Andrew on the ceiling. Damage at the senior center from over the weekend?
Yeah, so we just, uh, so, initially it was toned out as a, uh, a roof collapse, which, uh, obviously. Kinda gets the wheels in motion a little bit quicker. Um, so I immediately, you know, head, head my way up here, and kind of let you guys know information as, as I. By the time I, I let you guys know it had been given, it was basically a, uh, a water leak, um, in a heating. It was a water leak at a heating unit, um, that had caused, uh, probably about six ceiling tiles to, to fall, um, to the. Ground, thankfully the fire department showed up, did a great job in cleaning it up, um, kinda getting that all, um, tidied together. Once, um, we kinda got an assessment of what needed to be done, what parts were there, um. I worked with DPW to get the appropriate part to fix it, we swapped the part in, got the heating unit back online, so at this point, everything is basically back to normal, and the fact that we needed about six new ceiling tiles.
And they're dropping tiles in half the size of these, so the two by twos would be.
Two by twos.
Minimal expense luckily, compared to what it could have been.
It's about a hundred bucks for the part.
The tiles are probably being loved well, well, no, those might run ten bucks a piece, but.
We'll get, we'll get a couple extras, because I had literally just had a conversation with, uh, with ILEED probably two days before about a couple of mixed ceiling tiles that we were talking about replacing, and that there weren't any in stock.
You could just buy a pack of, they come in what, ten or fifteen?
You get them at a ten pack for cheaper money, too, you do that, buy a couple of them, put them someplace in a closet, and we have them for the future.
Don't let them throw away any label or box carton that actually tells you the model of it. Or you'll never match it again, just by memory.
You may not, so if you find the right ones, it may be worth getting a few boxes and, and.
Sometimes they go out of style.
It's a pain to store stuff, yeah, they go out of style, it might be worth, and I can't tell many places I've gone to where they have mismatched ceiling tiles, so maybe we oughta, you know.
Yeah, that's, that was on my list of, list of to-dos, was to get down there, I know that they have a few in stock, maybe only like two or three, but the box might have the model number of it, but we can at least. Cue to see if Lowe's has some.
You can sometimes get lucky and they will stamp the back of it.
Maybe.
Right. I'm not counting on that at all.
I should make lists, there's something else that I wanted to. Wow. That's bad.
It's been a long Tuesday.
Well, he's thinking, do you have anything you'd like to raise from your selectman's position?
Oh, I have no report at this time.
Can wait, if I think of something else, I'll write it down.
Do you have anything you wanna report?
I just wanna thank you guys for, you know, supporting me over the last two and a half years, um, letting me serve this community, having faith and trust in me to do my job. Not micromanaging my everyday. Operations and, uh, you know, let me, uh, put together a A-plus staff here, so. Hopefully, you know, we set, I set you guys up well for the future and, um, you know, proud of the stuff that we've done, so, thank you. Thank you to everybody in the community who's also supported me in that.
I think it's us, we should be thanking you, Andrew, you've done an outstanding job here, and you were put into a very difficult situation with, um. Very. I won't say hostile employees, but employees that are used to a semi-hostile work environment and were very standoffish and very splintered. And your ability to bring all those department heads and the workers together, and I've heard so many people say, oh, happy they are with you, on every level of employment. And department heads that didn't like to come into this town hall, that enjoy coming in here now, that's a great accomplishment for what you've done, and I thank you.
Is there a, is there a way we can, we can have for the permanent record, a word of thank you from the Board of Selectmen to, uh, address Andrew's service?
I'm sure there's a way. One is, it's on YouTube for the rest of our lives.
There you go, I can always go back and pull it up and look.
But I hear you, maybe.
We have to give appreciation. We have your tasks, Sandy with that, instead of our normal task.
Yeah, I can't write you.
Andrew, tell us how to tell you how much we appreciated what you did for us. And have it on my desk by tomorrow, please. From my perspective, uh. I came in to the Board of Selectmen very wrong, uh, when I came in, I unders, I had a lot to learn, what a member of the board's roles and responsibility was. I also had a lot to learn about each department's roles, and. When I came in, there was a lot of. As Greg said. I don't know if the best way is discontinuity. Difficult communications between different departments. And I think it would, it compounded itself over time somehow, and I don't wanna get into that, but I do know that. When the town administrator applicants were presented before the board, and we had to make the decision. To me, that felt like the most important decision I was gonna make, being a member of this board. For the foreseeable future. And you had some pretty good competition.
Our committee produced some good candidates.
And. I really feel like. You exceeded my expectation and my hope for the person that was gonna fill this position. And find ways to address what I thought at the time was. The roadblocks that were preventing us from, as a community, taking those next steps. And. One, I can't thank you enough for the effort you put in to make that happen. Because that's what it was, it was an effort, it wasn't just something that comes just because you know how to smile. And when I talk to other boards. Whether it's chairman or just members of the boards, chairwomen, I'm still getting better at my pronouns, I never intend to mean one thing or the other there.
Precious.
Exactly. I just hear respect for what you've done. Appreciation in many ways, but it's always, it seems, they come out with, they respect you for how you treated and worked with them, and they respect you for what you brought to the table. And it's gonna be a tough position to replace, because we made some good progress and. I don't wanna take a step back, so I'm gonna be very selfish and just say, I don't wanna be, take a step back. But I'm very happy with what you were able to contribute in your time here to help us take the steps forward we did.
I think you, I think you guys picked somebody who's gonna carry the torch well. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've had our platitude. I believe the next thing is we have two executive session items on the agenda. Unless you guys feel differently, I don't think we were planning on coming back into session after this. So. What I would like to do is. I need to take. I got confused between new or old.
Oh, uh, that does, that wasn't necessarily on the agenda.
Right.
But that did come in, basically what we just need for action is for you guys to decide whether to require that twenty-one E assessment on, on. The donation for Felton Field, if not, then we can just try to get the warrant article together.
I would like to pass this to, uh, members of the planning board and conservation commission, see if they have a better understanding of the history of that lot, to see if the true, um, what you just called the, uh, that report is required or not.
And. They specifically wanna go to Felton Field, does that commission have to agree to accept the added parcel? Cause they are a separate commission.
The town would have to accept it as a donation to the town and assign Felton Field Commission as, um, the board in charge of, or be charged with its maintenance.
I don't think Felton Field has to say yes or no, I think they just deal with the management, once we tell them it's theirs to manage, is that kinda what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
But the town would have to agree to adopt the land or we can.
I would appreciate, we should just formally say, do you have an issue with this, but.
The, the town, the town would at a town meeting have to accept the property, and that's basically what the next, the next step is, that a warrant article would have to be drafted, and then the, basically. The deed transfer would have to be drafted, so, um, it gets approved at town meeting, and then the transfer is, is.
We also need to do a review of any bylaws. Or charges that identify what the Felton Field commissions, in case we have to redefine.
Their controls.
Their controls, they may go, you know, I don't know if they're referencing deeds and parcels, or if they just say.
I think it's as it's signed, so I, I, I'll see if, I know it's, um, the enabling legislation basically establishes what their site is, but I don't think it specifically defines the bounds, it was just initially. I think the, um, the parcel of land donated by. Then, so.
And so, again, if it's just referencing one donor, now we have a new donor, we may have to have that revised all in one, or a series of warrants, I don't know how. Jim would tell us what we can combine versus having have. Jim would tell us what we can combine versus having have separately, like if this one passes, then the following two or three warrants would have to also be approved in order to, or is it all just one big warrant where all of this happens?
Okay. Kind of leaning on them to draft that.
And I understand if it's just an email to the interim.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Which technically is an email to yourself, that you just don't open, so it looks like an unopened email until the interim shows up.
Part of that 10-page document.
Other than that, I would like to take two minutes and then come right back, and then spot out the executive session, close the doors, and get into executive session. I just got to step out the door real quick. So, you guys can talk some more to yourselves, you don't have to call it necessarily like a recess or anything, because nobody's waiting on me.
There's still time to register before the January 15th deadline. This was received in January 13th, and is now the 21st. So we won't be registering for that.
They do have onsite registration.
I don't need your minutes.
For $50 a month.